Okay, we have a minute. We should think about our thing. We have a minute to... What page we have? I was thinking 2019. We have money, thank, I will pay. Towns is even higher than the plan. 2019. The motion, say, I will pay. Okay, my...
Under the whole business, we have the second reading of the Home Rule Amendment for the planning director. Do you have any questions? I assume everybody understands it?
Okay. We talked about this a good bit, so...
Yes.
I made the motion to approve it.
Okay, we have a motion to approve. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a second. I will pay.
Next item is the second reading for the small sale warrants.
Question? We'll pick one on call. Okay, we have a motion to approve. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, three seconds. I will pay. And a new bid?
Okay, under the new business, we have relocation of the police department. Due to the grant, you know, given to the library, they're saying let expand the library. So we need to decide on a location where we have to move the police department, either temporary or permanent. Yeah, because we're running out of time. We don't have much time there. I mean, if we're gonna let the library expand.
I have something to add. On this, it's okay. I know the Furlane refurbishing the little building out in Furlane was an option, and that's a viable option. We have a building to rent here in town. It's another option. It's in a move-in. It's in a move-in condition. I would like to get some requests for proposals out to look and see how much it would cost to rehab the planning and zoning department. And just to take a look and see the cost effectiveness of moving the police department to Furlane, moving them across the street, planning the zoning, or going for the temporary option of keeping them downtown and, you know, moving them into a rent-ready space. Personally, I like the idea of having a police department downtown. And I think this might call for some citizen input, even though the decision is ultimately ours to do. The input from the citizens would, you know, give us an idea of how the citizens feel about the relocation of the police department, because this is, you know, our responsibility as City Council.
Okay?
I have something to add. I said we have the police department where they're at and the library, you know, if we want it. Plus. Perhaps the building up here, they vote. Make the use of the library.
Okay. Any input?
Well, when we purchased the house, we purchased the house with City Hall in it. At that time, the library had a grant. But once they got the grant, then we voted to move the police department. Well, time is running out. Number one, that building over there cannot be renovated and ready by December 1st. So I am going to go forward and make a motion that we go back to the original plan. We put City Hall in the house and let the police department come here. And I'll go second.
Okay, we have a motion to second. I will pay. I will pay.
Y'all let's start back.
Okay.
Ms. Betty, what's the new plan now? The police department coming here?
Police department up here, City Hall will go up there. That's about it. And living here, and that's why we purchased the house, to do that, so.
I'd like to explain my position on opposing. Why I oppose moving City Hall is because we denied a woman's request to do business at that location. And now City Hall has decided to do their business at the same location.
But there's a difference in the business side.
Your lab, your lab business office is based on Broad Street, so that's not on the park.
It is a government building. I disagree.
Are y'all considering the parking?
We're taking money, so...
Are y'all considering the parking that the library does daily? And those kind of things, did consideration to what? With what y'all proposing?
Is there a proposed budget for this project?
You say I'm just going to...
Proposed budget?
Right now, budget on that house.
Should I convert it to City Hall?
There's never been a budget for that house, never would have been.
Believe me.
There's never been any well-laid plans to tell the community how much it's going to cost to renovate that space and make it in the City Hall. It's just been done, however the city wanted it to be done. And that was way before our Home Rule Amendment, before the City Council had a say in how business is done in the City Hall. I don't see, you know, I don't see how it's okay for the city to conduct business, take money, make transactions, and not call it a business. And then when...
It's not a business, it's a government.
When someone else applies to do business on Broad Street, how are we going to tell them that they can't do business on Broad Street? Are we going to turn every home? Is that going to leave us to turn in every home into a business on Broad Street? Probably not. But I don't, I don't see where, where we can just... There's, there's no request for proposal, there's no idea how much it's going to cost to finish. There's no... Yes, we have the library grant money, yes, we have some, some options. But I think, I think this, this topic deserves a, a public forum and a public input before we vote. I think this...
We've already voted, right? It's passed.
Well, if y'all not...
See, so if City Hall wants to go there, is the address Broad Street or is it? I'm sorry?
It's Broad Street.
Okay, how is it zoned? I mean, would it have to be zoned commercial?
No.
Does not?
You can have offices in your home. We have people that have home offices in your home. Is they allowed offices?
No, but City Hall, it would not affect it. Would you address government offices and where they could be?
Generally speaking, the government put its offices wherever it pleases to put its offices. If you, one of the things that you could do is just if we under our own motion, propose it, present it to an office institutional use or public space use, and it will have that voting classification. Generally speaking, public offices can go there, public offices.
And government offices are not the same as commercial spaces?
They are not.
I think we should suspend, I think we should suspend this until the new administration gets in place. We're going to have a new mayor and a new council coming up. And those, that administration may not be on the same page with this one. So I think it would be in the best interest of the city to wait and not rush into any decisions. We've got options for the police department. We've got an immediate option to the council.
I have a question.
Okay. Why wasn't this discussed, y'all discussed this previously up to soon elsewhere about our knowledge? And why didn't y'all bring it out to the public when y'all come out of executive session last week? When y'all postponed the sale of the house instead of letting the public know what y'all was talking about? Then turn around and come in here, shotgunning into a vote tonight?
It was the best of my knowledge, it was the best of my knowledge that when we came out of the executive session the other night, that I made a motion to suspend the sale of the house, not to turn it into City Hall. So that's never been on the table and never been thoroughly discussed as it should be. This is a major move for the city, in my opinion.
Let me, let me put a little... It don't have to be for every month in City Hall, it can be a different. And putting just a little more money is not that good. That's the, that's the cheapest way to go at the present time. That's the way I see it.
And if we renovate the building across the street, you've got no parking over there at all, not even wood space. It would be a lot if you go with that building.
All right, hold on. Go ahead.
Oh, I am a citizen here in the state. I've been here about 20 years. And when I moved here, I thought it was a very nice little town. And the more I find out, the more I... I don't agree moving here, I just don't like how things are done. For example, that was houses that, I don't know how much taxpayer money paid for it. I never saw a summary of like bike station or how much funds, what nails cost and what siding cost and what that pretty little porch came out. Who paid for it? Yes, the jail did take care of it, but who pays the prisoners? I think it's tax money, Bayberry County tax money paid for all that stuff. We don't know where it went to. If my husband does bad things, his statements, spends things he should not spend. And children, children get spanked on the hand. So just because it got taken off the auction, nobody was told that they put on the door, that it's not the option in a couple of days, that would have been salary. What is the justice? I mean, we don't find out about it till we read in the newspaper. I am a citizen, I pay taxes. I've been, I've been asked to do things as a business person. I am a business worker.
All right.
But I get rejected because, am I P.I.? I'm a citizen, I pay taxes. Just because I don't raise a horse and act like a ass. I'm a lady, and I do not raise a horse very often. But I don't like being treated like a substitute citizen. So I think we should have a printout of how much we spent on that property and why should he be chosen to do something we weren't able to physically... I might have wanted to buy that house. I did go through that house. So I think we should write.
Like I say, you can't be sold many times. We represent, come in and maybe we'll accept, make it accept.
And my husband's been a citizen here since he was born. He knows things going on that most people don't want to touch, touch. He served in this country, being male. But that doesn't matter.
Okay.
I know it doesn't matter. You're, you're a mayor, you're, you know, y'all have your own little titles. And he's a judge, I mean lawyer.
You're out of order.
But as, I'm out of order, just like she should be.
You got anything else somewhere?
All right, we done, we got discussion. So first, we follow away and explore.
See how we're done discussing it. It's, this vote sounds a lot like a vote we had a few years ago on transfer station that was rammed on through without a lot of work involved. This, it needs a lot more discussion than just deciding right here tonight.
I have a question. I've got a couple of questions. First off, first off, a question I got is, okay? Let's assume that this actually takes place.
Wait, hold on. Do we need to keep running this around and just talk for all day long?
I can violate you here, you're right.
Well, I'd like, I'd just like to know how you plan on providing security for the employees that are going to be in, that are going to be in that, in that house? How you going to provide security for them? That's number one. Number two is, has anyone done a shooter scenario? How that's going to be applicable in that house? Should there be a shooter scenario?
I think we pulling on spring.
No, I'm not. You're not providing the security. You don't have security for the people, okay? You, there's been no discussion about that. Aren't, aren't the employees of the city important enough to wonder what is the situation? What is their security going to be in that, in that situation? They have lockable doors here. Are they locked, will there be lockable doors? Will they provide protection for them when they're conducting business?
Okay.
I got a question now. Do we have an estimate of how much it would cost to refurbish one of these buildings versus the estimate to finish that? Because we're throwing numbers out, but we don't really have numbers. Do we know what the cost would be to go ahead and finish the new City Hall that you guys just voted on versus renovating?
We're going to sit down and get figured. I do know that.
Are they, are they available publicly? Do we have those numbers?
We do not have them.
So we really don't know if that's going to cheaper renovate that, that's another half. If we don't have numbers.
The, the building across the street will have to be completely, will have to be checked for us. Does, does it, we have to check for it. It's, it's in very structured shape. It would take an awful lot to get that house down. I don't know that that's a good... I have an issue with the agenda altogether. And, and the agenda reads that new business is relocation of the state on police department, not relocating City Hall.
Agreed.
Okay, so we didn't even come in here tonight knowing we were going to talk about City Hall. Now we got a vote. Now we've got a vote, a motion and a vote that nobody even saw coming. I was prepared to do something with the state on police department and relocating that, but I was not prepared for the, the blindsiding of moving City Hall over there. I vehemently disagree with moving City Hall over there. And I suggest that, that we have a forum, that we take input from the community and we get a better idea of the cost associated with moving over there and quit doing things the way that we've always done them, because that's gotten us where we are. And we're not in a good place. We're not in a good place right now. And the same behavior is just continuing straight down the track, and I'm not okay with it.
Why? We've been talking about this since we bought the house.
Well, that's fine, but we didn't talk about it tonight, not enough.
Perry, can I speak? All right, y'all had, y'all had a meeting, work sessions Thursday night. Why wasn't this brought up at the work session Thursday night? Or before the vote was made, or we could have forced our opinions before the vote was made. I'm not quite understanding. Three months ago, y'all were in favor of selling the house. Building, moving another City Hall, taking, going to Furlane with the temporary police department. Or had several options like what I said. Y'all come out of executive session the other night, and the next thing you know, the house is off the market Friday morning. I was told it was postponed. I don't know what went on in the executive session Thursday night, y'all discussed City Hall going there Thursday night.
The only, the only decision in the executive session was that we would not sell the house.
Okay, and so tonight, y'all just shotgun in it, let's move, let's go through all of the night?
My question about the agenda, my question about the agenda was that we would... It's not going to be legal. I don't think the motion was legal. Was it? Was the motion even legal if it's not on the agenda?
What we're not on the agenda to talk about this Thursday night. And that's not on the agenda tonight. And then y'all wait for the decision, something is wrong.
Thomas, if the, if the agenda made it is we're moving the police department through this building as natural, thanks progression is, no, that we have to move it into... We have to move, we have to move City Hall somewhere. This is not checkers.
I don't think there's anything wrong with it.
This is not checkers.
I, I agree last week with folks on the option. And the reason why was because, excuse me, the transparency of handling the property. So I do agree with that should have been stopped and the process should have been have auctioneer show the building, have advertised correctly, have things implemented in place to begin with. Because the talk amongst people were very questionable about how it was handled. So I had a question last week that I couldn't ask. And the question was going to be, were we going to table the house until next year? Okay, that's not happening. But I was in government for 18 years, and I did do proposals, buildings, whatever have it. I was a pyramid agent. You have to look at the whole picture. You have options. And one of the biggest things that does cost money is when you don't even look at your options. So we're saying we have a building, and Perry just pointed it out, that it is at distress. But you do own the building, so at some time you have to fix that distress because it's going to continue. So do you put the money upfront in something that can become permanent? You have another building, Furlane, Furland, whatever, you look at that cost. You might even look at renting until you can really look at the total cost. So my question here tonight is, are we stepping before we need to step? Do we need to stop and look at things? I understand the library has to be done because of grant money. And I've worked with grant money, and you do get caught in timeframe, totally understand that. So with that being said too, sometimes maybe you can't do the long term right now. Can you do something short term? And short term may be to rent a building. Or maybe to start one level of that building that you can get into. And security was brought up, that is an issue with government today, as it is in schools today. I stuck today, and I had to push button after push to get to places. So I'm just asking, are we putting our foot too far forward without stopping and looking at our options?
We, we've actually discussed everything, you know. Everything, we have been doing it since I was... Yes, we have.
Okay, so if you've discussed it, have you advertised for people to give you cost?
No.
Hold it. I'm asking whole board. I'm asking in a conscious effort. Did you advertise what it would take? Did you, maybe this one's a hundred thousand, and maybe this one's eighty thousand, but this could do more space, or it's more for the dollar. It's a lot of things you have to look at when you do do these things. That's all I'm saying, is I haven't seen anything advertised for contractors, for proposals. I haven't even seen the minutes. But like Perry brought up, some buildings are at distress, but the city owns them. You don't put the money into them, they're just going to get worse distressed. And I'm just saying, do we need to halt and look at our options?
Okay, thank you.
I think you're right.
We have the citizens that are Patrick Corbren, who wants to talk about illegal sale of 1921 Broad Street House.
Sure. I'm actually going to speak tonight because I hope the matter was settled. And I arrived here a few minutes late, so I'm not entirely sure what went on tonight. But apparently it's what the citizens don't want. So maybe for one time, a few people will be happy with the fact that I'm going to say this is an illegal meeting, and you can expect to have another lawsuit tomorrow to have this vote negated. It's an illegal meeting because your attorney and your city clerk chose not to, very simply, post the date of meeting seven days in advance. And that's all I need to say. So your vote is negated.
I agree. Okay.
Next, we have Kurt Vogelreiter, from the Tree Committee and Pedestrian Safety and Park Flops.
I don't believe you can hear.
I can speak, I can speak for Kurt and the Tree Board. Maybe someone from the Tree Committee can come up and discuss, discuss, somebody can come up and do that. Are we allowed substitutes?
You also can be a substitute.
I'm asking for someone to come up and fill in.
I don't know, looks like I'm going to start, I'm not able, able to prepare it. Like I have to remind you of what Kurt was planning to do to discuss tonight. But here, 21 Broad Street, Set Number Tree Committee. And as you know, we've met several times about planning trees, starting on Broad Street and possibly move out areas, and there's some planning that you could share specifically for trees. One of the items that I do remember that the Tree Committee wanted to bring before the council and the mayor was whether there was, there was a form that has to be signed any time that the authority was taken down off of the right of way, if I'm not mistaken. And the Tree Committee was wanting that, that form is, is required, have to be. And I haven't seen this form yet, so if you didn't scan it, I'd be glad to be there. So it gives, it says, under the link in the other, a property located at a street address. There were large tree, what hit it in the area that appears to be a yard, but maybe in the right of way of said street. I hereby agree that the city is standing with a new said tree, disposal tree, as it seems fit. I hereby convey a temporary mark usement for the city. Worst contrived, depend on my property, the new said tree. I hereby release and waive any claims that I may have against the city. As officer, agents, employees, whether it's just planned or known, or unknown, or rising from removal of the tree. I believe the last sentence.
Yes.
I hereby release and waive any claims that I may have against the city. As officer, agents, employees, whether it's just planned or known, or unknown, or rising from removal of the tree. I believe that is the question that the Tree Committee wanted to draw before the council and the mayor to determine why that is in there. Because contractors that would make the tree should already have liability insurance to cover that. And if that's the case, why would the homeowner be expected to pay the cost of removal of the city tree?
Actually, the way you were reading that, it sounded like it was not on the east of the city's east end. And if you're trying to get it approved for the city to go in and cut down trees on the property owner's land that does not have an east end. And if that's the case, I don't agree. I have a later... I, I have a later problem, though, is if you have a house, and if, if you have a tree stuck in your front porch on your house, and it's, you know, twenty feet back from the sidewalk, we can't, the city can't go in and, and cut down.
Well, well, certainly, if it's on the, the person's property, I don't think that's what they're, they're asking about specifically. What he's asking is there a form that has to be signed by citizens? If the tree is on a city rightway or a city eastbound.
Could you read it again? It sounds like they weren't talking about on the eastbound, it was talking about adding the eastbound. Now, here's what we discussed, was the, the waiver of liability that the city is asking homeowners to give, um, to give the city, right? Isn't that what, what the last is? The last sentence reads, we, a friend of mine has a tree, ready to cut down, he's ready to sign the permission slip. And the last couple of sentences on this thing says, if they, if the tree falls and crashes into the house, nobody's responsible of him. His insurance was definitely not gonna pay. So, I don't think it's, it's necessary for us to, um, put the burden of responsibility for insurance and liability for cutting down trees onto homeowners. That's ridiculous. We need to cut a tree down, we just cut it down, and the tree people have insurance, and the city has insurance. Why, why are we asking the homeowners to do that, was basically what we discussed. And if you know anything...
That language is intended to protect the city. If, if, if the committee wants to add in another sentence that said that, that the contractors, uh, get rid of contractor, have to carry insurance, and this is not a way that he claims against a contractor with insurance, that's fine. But this, if it came to do, if the city's on forces to cut down the tree, then it's to protect the city.
Please, please, please protect it now.
Yes. Says, I, Phil Blank, I'm the owner of property located at set address, set number four. This is a large tree, located in the area that appears to be nine yard, but maybe in the right of first street.
So, and that's...